Tuesday, June 16th, 2015. The time is 8:30. Before we begin, just a note for the record, we did meet in a work session at 7:30 to discuss our 2016 CIP requests. And we'll be doing more of that at our next work session. So we'll begin today's meeting with public comment. Is there any public comment? I see none, so we will move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Commissioner Vander Mullen and support by Commissioner Coleman. Any questions or comments? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We next move to agenda item number four, which is an action request by the aeronautics department.
This is a request to recommend to the board to authorize staff to develop and present articles of incorporation for a regional airport authority. In November 2013, Airport Board Chair Roger Morgan appointed a governance study steering committee to gather information and investigate various methods and models for an airport to be governed. Following a 24-week study period, which included interviews with 35 stakeholders, the study committee presented its recommendation that the governance of the Gerald R. Ford International Airport be transferred to a regional airport authority. The Board of Commissioners held two work sessions to review recommendations and in September of 2014 approved in concept the recommendation. Subsequently, Chair Dan Kornike appointed an airport governance transition steering committee with representation from the Board of Commissioners and the Airport Board to develop a plan that could lead to the transition of the airport's governance from Kent County oversight to a newly formed regional airport authority. The committee recommended and the Board supported by resolution in February of 2015 adoption of legislation to allow the creation of regional airport authorities. House Bill 4468 has been approved by the legislature and is awaiting the governor's signature. The steering committee has also worked with Steve Baldwin Associates, the airport and county staff to develop a plan for the transition, which was presented to the Board of Commissioners in a work session on June 11th. Pursuant to the pending legislation, the next steps in the process are to create articles of incorporation for the new regional airport authority and a public hearing on those articles. If the articles are adopted by the Board, the authority will be established and begin negotiations with the county on a lease and other agreements required for the transfer.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Commissioner Vander Mullen, is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Voorhees, are there questions or comments? Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the way I understand this, if we go ahead and pass this today and it works through the system, the next thing we'll be seeing is the articles for our review and then
Correct.
ultimate passage if we decide to go there.
That's correct. Let's move to that.
The timing on the articles?
I think that those would be considered, I think we're looking at a public hearing that would have to be scheduled, and I think we're looking at July 30. Is it July 30 for the articles? Yes. So would you need to have the Board approving? No, the Board would not approve the articles until after the public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Good. All right. Mary, do you want to talk about the schedule?
Just real quickly, this I did grab this morning before the meeting started. So the articles would be presented to the LHR in July 14th to finance on July 21st, and then on July 30th, the Board would set the public hearing. You have to do that at a Board meeting. And then the public hearing is scheduled for your next Board meeting, which would be August 27, and more than likely, there would be action on the articles at that meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair. Am I of the understanding the governor has not yet signed it? Or has he signed?
I know.
We haven't received confirmation that it's signed yet.
Oh, okay. We don't know of any problem.
No. I don't believe there's
It passed legislature, both houses unanimously. I don't think it's
Yeah. They're just process. Government process, Harold, you know how
No way. Nancy goes right at it.
Other questions? Commissioner Wilkowski?
So since the beginning, this has been a process to study the pros and the cons of both, you know, keep as is, is there, what's the best model? The best model we've been moving forward to change to is the authority. And so the second to last whereas stating that, you know, so we're going to present the articles, the two committees, standing committees will approve, we'll have a public hearing, and then if the articles are adopted, the authority will be established. So according to what Mary just said, it would be the August 27 vote would be the official date, the birth date, in theory, in reality, of the new authority. That would be our true up-down vote. Do we want an authority? I mean, up till now, it's still, we're allowing it to happen. Even the legislation says you can do this, doesn't say you have to do this. So I'm just looking for that.
That's correct.
That's the date and time, that it would be created and negotiations would begin between
The county and
county and the new authority to transfer assets and liabilities and all that.
That's correct.
So Brian, when would the new, if this all goes the way I would like it to go, which we don't know yet, but when would the new Board, the Authority Board be seated?
September, end of September is what we're anticipating for the, this Board, to seat the new Board, the Airport Authority Board.
So that Board has to be seated, and then that Board will be seated before the official transition takes place?
Correct. That Board has to be seated and then have ongoing meetings in order to make decisions so that we can ultimately send an application into the FAA, which is a three to six-month process, and then ultimately transition all employees over. The goal is on July 1st of 2016. So we believe that will give us plenty of time to get the FAA approval process in place, work with employees to ensure a smooth transition of the assets, and then ultimately start the new authority on July 1st.
May I follow up?
Yes.
Is there any road bumps on the radar from the FAA that you've heard in your discussions?
Not that we're aware of. We did have a initial meeting with the FAA headquarters in Washington on May 4th, and they had received a copy of the enabling legislation. We outlined the timeframe with them, and they did not foresee any issues. I think it's, obviously, the legislation passing unanimously, and we didn't have that, I don't believe we had that House vote at that point, but that's what the FAA likes to see. They like to see full support, which up to this point, we've seen.
Commissioner Mast.
Thank you, Chair. Just a little more on the timing. You say the new Board's seated or established the end of September, but a county commission appoints the Board.
Correct.
And don't we have to take applications and go through that process?
That would happen between the time the vote on the authority and the articles of incorporation and the time that the Board, the new Authority Board is seated. Yes.
Well, so if we're
August 27th.
We pass, I mean, we basically decide yes or no, and then we go through the process in 30 days to come up with a Board?
That's, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, that's the way the schedule is outlined right now.
Well, because I think we need to do a proper vetting of them.
I mean, that's one item that I know we've talked a lot about, who's, how do we point the Board? Where do they come from?
How many?
How many?
That will all be in the
Well, that's in the articles, of course. Yeah, that will be in the articles. And I guess I'm looking at the Chair of the Legislative Committee, because that's got to go through the legislative process, I think.
Yes.
Is it absolutely necessary that the Board be seated by the end of September?
No, it's not. I think we've got the ability to push that back potentially a little bit.
A little bit.
We've got a little bit of room in there. But again, the goal is to have that Board seated as soon as possible in order for them. What the FAA wants to see is that the Board is seated and that they are fully capable of the operation.
Well, then you use the date of July 1. Is that July 1 of 2016?
2016, correct.
That it basically is, everything is done.
That's correct, and that's when the employees transfer over to the authority.
All right.
So Commissioner Wilkowski, think of August of this year as the Declaration of Independence and July of next year, the Constitution. We leave that metaphor alone.
I think this August is basically
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to confirm one point when this discussion first started, just to make sure that I have this accurate. One of the big advantages of becoming an authority allows us to have that authority, recruit additional airlines in a smooth, and I think the word nimble's been used, but it gives, it makes that recruitment process easier and smoother. Is that correct?
That is, that is one of the aspects of it, yes. That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I see none. Thank you, Brian Ricks, our Executive Director at the airport. And with no other questions on the table, let's call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Can I just raise
I'm sorry, did I miss you?
Who's going to now creating the articles? Is that the same two committees, or the airport government transition steering committee along with our county attorney?
Yeah, and this is going to be vetted out next week, I think, by the transition steering committee.
All right, all right. And that's got to be done fairly quickly, so you must have a good jump on that.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. We then move to agenda item number five, which is an action request by front of the Court.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to approve the front of the Court's request to submit an application to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services for an amendment to extend the 2013 to 2015 Title IV D Cooperative Reimbursement Program Agreement for 2016 and to authorize the Board Chair to sign all grant documents. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services provides funding to counties to operate a cooperative reimbursement program designed to enforce all orders for child support. Beginning in 2013, the state established a three-year grant application cycle to reduce the workload and processing requirements for state and local units of government. Front of the Court's Cooperative Reimbursement Program will operate with 98 full-time positions. In addition, the grant will cover the cost of 13 staff and support services from the Circuit Court Family Division. In the event that grant funding is eliminated or decreased, the positions will be eliminated unless continuation funding is approved pursuant to the fiscal policy on grants. The final amount appropriated to the front of the Court for each fiscal year is subject to approval by the Board of Commissioners during the annual budget process. This grant period is October 1, 2015, to September 30, 2016.
Is there a motion? Commissioner Mast, Commissioner Coleman, do I have you down for a second? Are there questions or comments? Okay. I see none, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we move to agenda item number six, which is an action request by the Prosecutor's Office.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to approve an additional Assistant Prosecuting Attorney one position and to appropriate $70,591 to the Prosecutor's 2015 Title IV E reimbursement program budget in the Special Projects Fund. Due to budget reductions over the past several years, the Prosecutor's Office has decreased the number of full-time equivalent staff from 83 in 2009 to 75.5 in 2014. Five of those full-time equivalents were Assistant Prosecuting Attorneys. At the same time, the number of abuse and neglect case filings has increased 45% between 2012 and 2014 for several reasons, including a 41% increase in the Department of Health and Human Services Child Protective Services staff over the past five years, along with turnover among the newly hired CPS staff. Policy changes that mandate filings for certain situations unless overridden by the Assistant Prosecuting Attorney and reduce personnel time for Prosecutor's Office to consult on cases, which has led to increased filings. The increase in court filings has increased indigent defense costs within the Circuit Court. As additional cases flow into the system, the Prosecutor's Office ability to consult on cases preemptively has been reduced. This has an impact of allowing more cases into the system because an APA consult may have prevented certain cases from being filed originally. In the event that grant funding is eliminated or decreased, the positions will be eliminated unless continuation funding is approved pursuant to the fiscal policy on grants. The Legislative and Human Resources Committee approved the additional APA at its June 9th meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Commissioner Mast, is there support?
More.
Commissioner Morgan? Is that you? Oh, Commissioner Vander Mullen.
Guy next to me.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Are there questions or comments? Vice Chair Henderson.
Well, typically, when you're hiring Assistant Prosecuting Attorneys, you assume that they will be prosecuting, and this is going to be, you know, a lot of the child welfare CPS-type cases. But I understand this is actually to be a little different and that there'll be, you know, perhaps we could have it explained, how this Assistant Prosecutor will actually be functioning when it comes to these CPS cases?
Our prosecutor, Bill Forsythe, is here today. Good morning.
We work in conjunction with the DHS. When they're prepared to file a petition to remove a child from a home, they'll consult with us, and we represent them when it goes to court. And a lot of times, they will file them now without any input from us, so we don't get involved until after the case has already been initiated into the court system. Once it gets into the court system, the court is required to appoint attorneys for the children, the mother and the father, if those are all parties to the lawsuit, and it's got, quite frankly, expensive. I think, what is it, they're all like a million-plus dollars for defense, to defend those kind of cases. And we're hopeful that by adding another assistant, we can call some of those cases out of the system before they get into it and save the county in terms of the funding for defense attorneys. Second of all, I mean, we're just overwhelmed with the number of cases that DHS is putting into the system. And we've lost five lawyers, and to put it in some perspective, Kent's got over 600,000 people, we have 33 assistants. Ingham County with about 280,000 has 31 and a half assistants. So we're doing a lot with not very many bodies. And just once the cases get into the system, we're hard-pressed to cover all the court here exists it is right now. And we're hopeful with another body, we'll be able to do that more efficiently and be able to cut some of the cases out entirely and save the county money in the long run. I don't know if that answers your question, but
Just to clarify, to further clarify what you've just said, is that this is not to add to the prosecutions for CPS cases, this is to evaluate them before they get to that level. You know, when you have a case and you're prosecuting it, you want to win it. And I, I think that family reunification has been one of the goals here, you know, where possible.
Well, I don't think the goal necessarily is to win or lose in any of these cases, whether it be particularly in child neglect cases. You're not necessarily, your long-term goal is necessarily to take the children out of the home and put them up for adoption. You're trying to keep the family intact if you can, and anything we can do to try to facilitate that, that's part of our function. So in one respect, yes, we try to take the children away if we feel it appropriate, if DHS feels it's appropriate, yes. But there are going to be instances where we don't think that's appropriate, and we'll take the case out of the system entirely, or we'll agree to some kind of disposition short of that. But to tell you that it's going to just do one thing, it's not. I mean, the person will have to do all of those things, but it will be confined to that portion of the office. I mean, we're not going to take the person and move him over to the criminal division and use him to prosecute criminal cases. It's going to be dedicated to doing the work with DHS and child abuse neglect cases.
Commissioner Coleman, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just a question to clarify. So the first bullet under, inside the second bullet there, so CPS staff, that's one of the most challenging jobs in the world, but what has caused the significant turnover there, and how does that relate to the increased number of abuse and neglect cases filed?
That's probably a question better directed to them than me, but they have certain directives that have come down from the Supreme Court that requires them to pull children from the home and file petitions in instances where in years past, they didn't do it. But quite frankly, you couldn't pay me enough money to be a protective services worker. It's a terrible, high-stress job, and if you're wrong, you can have some terrible consequences, and it doesn't pay that great, and there's just a lot of turnover, a lot of burnout. As a result, you've got a lot of people in there, not only have they increased the numbers from 70 to almost 100, but they're not very experienced. So, you know, if you have somebody who's done it a long time, they may be able to say, you know what, we don't need to proceed on this, but if you're new to it, I think you're going to err on the side of filing a petition and letting somebody else decide it for you. So it's kind of a vicious circle, but
Thank you.
Commissioner Mast.
Well, and just following up from that same point, what policy change is mandate filings for certain situations unless overridden by an Assistant Prosecuting Attorney? I guess two questions. What are the policy changes? Are those state changes, or are those, now they must be, or are they administrative changes of the DHS?
I think, first of all, the Supreme Court has made some rulings that require the appointment of a counsel for a lot of fathers in some of these cases, when they're absent even. Some of them are directed by DHS. I think Wayman probably could speak to that as well, if not better than that.
There's two things that have pushed this to this point where it's mandated. One is the P-21 initiative years ago, where the county worked with community foundation and others and created a P-21 system. So that forced more reporting. And the other thing that happened was the Children's Rights Settlement Agreement, which Bill was talking about, which mandated even more requirements in terms of how they would mandate cases because of what happened in McComb and Oakland and Wayne Counties with some significant abuse and neglect issues that occur. And we're still under that settlement agreement, which is creating more and more mandate, which is what Bill is talking about.
Well, and so by having an Assistant Prosecutor, you're hoping to override some of those situations, or at least prevent some of the situation from getting overblown?
That's part of it. The other part is, quite frankly, just to keep up with the work they're giving us. I mean, that's a tremendous strain on the people who work in that division. But if we can at the same time help the other assistants, but at the same time take some of the cases out of the system and save some money on the court-appointed attorney fees, I think we'll all come out ahead.
Commissioner Vander Mullen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look at the memo that's at the back of this request, written by Matthew, but in the bottom back end of it says, based on the above rationale, they're recommending, if the following five things occur, are we working on and making sure that those things can, can or can't happen?
Well, getting the state to pay for it in its entirety, that's probably a pipe dream. I mean, you'd like them to do it. I mean, they do it in Wayne County, they do a lot of things for Wayne County, they didn't do for other counties, but the Prosecutor's Association for years has tried to convince, formerly DHS, now DHS, to just fund the prosecutors across the state that do this kind of work. A lot of counties, their prosecutors have difficulty working with DHS, and some have chosen not to do this work at all. And the agency is now having to hire private attorneys to do the work that we do, and it's costing DHS more money to pay for private attorneys than it would to pay for us. And we've tried to convince them that, I mean, they've got a mammoth budget. Pull some money out of it and fund this type of program statewide, and they just, they won't do it. They will reimburse us, but it's at a very, very low number. We've got five attorneys now, we'll go to six, and we get about $70,000 back for the work we do for them. They would run up a bill for private attorneys to do what we do in a month for what they're paying us for a year. $70,000 is for the, all of them? They've got a reporting system that you almost wish you didn't have to do it. Maybe, is there an issue? Concur with that, but it's so burdensome that in some respects, you wonder why you bother even doing it, but it is a fair amount of money, so we do it. But why they just don't take the leap and fund this statewide, I don't know. It would be a better delivery system, they'd get better representation. The contract that we signed to get reimbursed, that was another bone of contention with Prosecutor's Association for a long time. That's why I didn't sign it, and it wasn't in our budget for last year, because we've always been working with DHS in the sense that we advise them, we offer advice to them. They changed the wording of the contract and said we shall represent them, and in the law, shall means a whole lot different than that we may do something. And we argued about that for a long time as to how that was going to all play out, but it's just a system that should work way better than it does, but it is what it is.
Maybe we can put something in our legislative priorities on this topic for next year.
Just to make a comment, we, your question regarding some of the things listed here, we've been working with Senator McGregor and Representative Burhulon on this issue that Bill brings up about disparity in funding between Wayne and Kent County. So they receive close to $4 million to prosecute cases over in Wayne County. We don't receive any from the state or Michigan Department of Services. We put that, we placed that on the table for them, and we've met with the Department of that. We're going to continue to pursue that, hoping that they will change the way that they're funded. We don't want to create a situation for, you know, we're in a worse position than what we currently are, and we'll continue to pursue that, but like Bill says, it's not an easy thing to happen when you're dealing with presidents.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
No, I was going to refer to the memo too.
The other thing is too, I don't want to stop doing this work because there's a lot of overlap between the abuse and neglect cases and some of the criminal cases. A lot of the, a lot of the people are charged criminally with abusing their children, and I don't want to have some other firm or office doing that work and then us doing the criminal over here and no communication. So I don't want to stop doing it, and I think that people who do the work for DHS do a nice job. But the funding disparity has never made any sense to me. And you should know that Wayman and Matthew have done a tremendous amount of work here to try to even the playing field, if you will, and help me work through this process. I appreciate what they did.
Any other questions? Commissioner Wilkowski?
The, I guess for myself and for this question that's before us is the dollars. And so to say the current five positions, the five Assistant Prosecuting Attorneys are funded with non-state dollars, so general fund and such, and then because of the reimbursement that is allowed, the additional money will allow the six. that is allowed, the additional money will allow the six, as opposed to pushing the money elsewhere?
What, what we're hoping to be able to fund this with is the reimbursement, the IVE funding, we're hopeful, because of the way we're going to try to fund it now, we're going to try to call it out as a separate funding unit, so that we can get, you know, some other costs that we can get reimbursed for. But any shortfall, we're hoping to be able to make up for by saving in the funds for the attorneys in the Circuit Court. And I know we've talked, Andy, about that, and I think we're all in agreement that if, if there's a shortfall, we can take the savings from there and transfer it to pay for this position. But for purposes of the, the rest of this year budget cycle, we'll have enough just based on the reimbursement.
Okay. Commissioner Mast.
Well, okay, so that, that sort of clarifies, I guess, another question that I had, but because the $70,591 does not buy us a full-time Assistant Prosecuting Attorney. Okay, I didn't, I was wondering about that. So what you're basically doing is, so we're giving you the approval to add an Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, hopefully to get $70,600 from this grant, to cover part of that and cover part of your other costs?
The shortfall hopefully will come from what we save in the attorney fees.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? I see none, so we'll call the questions. All, any question, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Bill, for your work on this, on this project. Next, we move to agenda item number seven, which is another action item from the prosecutor's office.
This is a request to recommend to the board to approve the prosecutor's request to submit an application to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services for an amendment to the existing fiscal year 2013 to 15 Title IV D Cooperative Reimbursement Program Agreement for 2016, and to authorize the board chair to sign all grant documents. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services provides funding to counties to operate a cooperative reimbursement program designed to establish paternity, as well as to secure and enforce support orders. Beginning in 2013, the state established a three-year grant application cycle to reduce the workload and processing requirements for the state and local units of government. The prosecutor's cooperative reimbursement program will operate with 19 full-time positions. In the event that grant funding is eliminated or decreased, the positions will be eliminated unless continuation funding is approved pursuant to the fiscal policy on grants. Final amount appropriated to the prosecutor's office for each fiscal year is subject to approval by the Board of Commissioners during the annual budget process. The grant period is October 1, 2015, to September 30, 2016.
So moved. Commissioner Voorhees made a motion to adopt. Is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Coleman supported. Are there questions? Vice Chair Hennessy.
We've had a couple requests today, and they're really for the next fiscal year, so this will be actually a part of our state budget approvals, the total budget approval, but we're already giving approval now.
Well, we're, we're submitting, we're getting approval to submit the grant request so that we can incorporate them into the budget.
So we can incorporate them in our October 1st budgets. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Coleman, did you have your hand up? Any other questions? I see none, so we'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to agenda item number eight, which is miscellaneous. Is there any commissioner miscellaneous this morning? Commissioner Bukowski?
A question related to, I'm sorry, coming to mind now, a month, two months ago, we had Network 180 in a budgetary quandary, and, and right now, kind of shocked with the silence of what's happening with Network 180, and I don't know if it, putting Commissioner Mast on the spot since he's on that board, are, are all things well, or?
Commissioner Mast, do you have any report?
No, all things are not well, but I think, I think things are moving towards some resolution. It's a combination of items. Number one is to look at the state for some relief, so we're, we're doing a lot of, a lot of work with our legislative people from this side of the state, getting a lot of support from the legislative staff. I think the other is to look at the way we do business at Network 180, and how we can somehow consolidate and make ourselves more efficient, and, and we have, we've implemented a lot of things. And then I think, look at the LRP operations, and really pushing to make that more efficient. I, I think there were some errors made in how they put that organization together, and that is, I, I've, I've, I've got to give lots of credit to Commissioner Stack, he has really taken, digging hold of that, really helping us out, I think, really supportive of, of our Network 180 portion with that, so. And that's just taking time.
Okay.
Let us move along. But I would say it, it's not going to turn around quickly, so agencies are going through some changes.
All right, thank you. Any other miscellaneous? Okay, our next meeting, keep in mind, is in, on July 21st, just one meeting in the month of July, and we will have a 7:30 a.m. work session in advance. With that, we are adjourned at 9:05.